Good morning, good morning. I am Councilwoman Felicia Porter representing the 10th District and as Chairperson of the Public Health and Environment Committee. This is just a reminder to make sure your cellphones are muted and/or turned off. Today, I am joined by President Zeke Cohen, committee members, thank you, committee members, Councilman Mark Conway.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We also have Councilman Mark Parker from the 1st District.
Good morning, thank you, Madam Chair.
And we also have two excused absences from Councilman Ryan Dorsey from the 3rd District and Councilwoman Odette Ramos from the 14th District. And I have several representatives from the Council President's Office and the committee's staff person is Marguerite Curran. Today is a follow-up, a second half of our informational hearing related to behavioral health for the purpose of reviewing Baltimore City's capacity to respond to increasing behavioral health challenges, including the Baltimore City Health Department staff, database evaluations from BHSP and reporting alignments of city-funded and non-city-funded entities, and the visibility of pro behavioral health efforts. As I mentioned before, we are having a series of legislative oversight hearings related to behavioral health to really get a handle on how we are conducting behavioral health from a public health perspective in Baltimore City. And it's so important for us to really have a great understanding of this as we're experiencing the behavioral health crisis, as we're experiencing the opioid and addiction crisis that we're seeing in Baltimore. We need to make sure that our city agencies are working with non-governmental entities like BHSP and the state level to ensure that we're getting maximum protection for our residents here in the city of Baltimore. Lastly, I want to underscore, when we're looking at these legislative oversight hearings, it is very concerted on quality of care and making sure that we are not saying that we don't want substance abuse clinics or mental health clinics in the city. We are saying that we have to have a quality-based perspective when we're looking at these types of clinics serving our residents within our city. And so, I'm super grateful to continue this conversation primarily today focused on COMAR 1063, which is a COMAR regulation that is very influential and quite influx at the state level. And we have an opportunity here in the city and within this committee to have a very robust approach as we're looking at the next Maryland General Assembly session. I will turn it over to Councilman Coe-- I'm sorry, President Cohen, if he has any remarks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to the folks who have joined us today. Thank you to BHSP. We had a really robust hearing last week in the Committee of the Whole related to crisis response. I appreciate the response that you all sent. It has been sent to the entire council, the Committee of the Whole. I look forward to further discussion as we dig into some of your recommendations and how we can build a best-in-class system here in Baltimore. I think this is an extremely important issue, and I appreciate this series of hearings focused on all of our behavioral and public health needs. With that, I'm going to turn it back to the chair, but again, appreciated receiving that document and look forward to a really robust conversation about it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, President Cohen. And in just really understanding, that Committee of the Whole hearing was very influential, and I believe that it adds to the work that we're doing in this committee. So, thank you for your leadership there as well. Next, we'll move into public testimony. As most of you know, I believe in making sure that we center resident voices, and so I moved public testimony to the top of the hearing so that all in attendance, including committee members, presenters, and also staff members have an opportunity to hear from the public as well. So, I'll start with Darcy Kerwin Garber from the Baltimore Harm Reduction Coalition. You have two minutes, ma'am.
I remembered to turn it on this time. Morning, great to see y'all. I'm Darcy Kerwin Garber with Baltimore Harm Reduction Coalition. We're a community-based, public health organization. Today, I wanted to talk about overdose prevention sites, that I know we brought this up previously in other hearings, both in Public Safety Committee and in the Public Health and Environment Committee. When we're talking about behavioral health, we're looking at mental health, substance use, and the intersection of those things. And we know that some drug or alcohol use, some of those symptoms can mimic or even mask mental health symptoms, and it's also really common and understandable when people then self-medicate using drugs or alcohol when they do have mental health symptoms. So, there is a very complex interaction here. So, when we look at overdose prevention centers as a community health hub, we're looking at a place where there's co-located mental health and substance use support. It can be really confusing for people to know where to get that support. If they're using drugs and have mental health symptoms, do they go to a place for mental health for substance use? They might want to have mental health support but not quite be ready to stop using drugs, and they still deserve a place where they can find support, where they don't experience further stigmatizing than treatment. It's also common for people when they do have, go into a place for support, that if they say, "Yes, I'm using drugs," then their mental health symptoms are dismissed as a cause or just a direct thing from the drugs, when oftentimes it is, again, a complex and interactive thing, interacting thing. So, again, overdose prevention centers, yes, they reduce overdose deaths, they improve community health, but also it's just a great place for people to know where to turn to, that they know where a location, regardless of what they're going through, or those interactions, or the stigma in community, they know where they can go to in community, where they can get support and help, and they won't be turned away. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Next, we have Candy Kerr from the Baltimore Harm Reduction Coalition.
My name is Candy. Thank you for having this again. Turns out I have been here. I thought everybody had multiple different committees. Surprise, you don't. So, this is the committee. Whenever I walked in, I didn't know what I was getting into, and I figured that I would have three to four minutes to think about it, but fortunately enough for me, you have public testimony first. So, what I am thinking about is, we've been talking more and more about how the majority of overdoses happen in people's homes, and that is true, and simultaneously, there are still people that are outside and having those issues. I think when we talk about, I know that when we talk about behavioral health, kind of what Darcy said, there are co-occurring disorders and health issues that happen in those, like, not just everyone, just people who use drugs. And so, community-based organizations like BHSP or BHRC and Charm City Care Connection and other places have the ability to be spaces where people can get help that they need if they can't access other, like, mental health services and stuff. Because in order for people to be able to access their mental health, their mental health services, they need to be able to have some kind of stability in their life, right? And so, you know, there are a lot of times when people might miss their appointments or, you know, I don't know, when people are dealing with homelessness and drug use, it's really difficult to try to get to these other things that might not be on the top of the priority list. And so, at places like Charm City Care Connection and Baltimore Harm Reduction Coalition, we can meet people where they're at and help them with their drug use and try to help them get to the mental health services that they need. And so, I think what I'm advocating for in this moment is OPCs, but also more drop-in centers around the city, which are not spaces to use drugs, but places where people can go to get help with their drug use and then referrals to behavioral health.
No, thank you so much, Candy, and thank you so much for your advocacy. I definitely support, definitely support making sure that we have those drop-in centers. I think that it has to be done in a way where it marries, you know, and I've always been very adamant about that, it has to be done in a way that marries governmental support and resources along with those sites within community as well. And I truly believe that the committee is able to kind of work through that together with you all. I think that's very important. Last but certainly not least, we have Dr. Davis, yes, from the Baltimore City Medical Society. Thank you so much for being here, sir.
Oh, sure thing. Good morning, everyone. Appreciate you having these meetings. I went back and watched a couple of them just to kind of catch up of what you guys were talking about. Steve Davis, I'm a psychiatrist, addiction medicine doc. I live in Baltimore City. I've grown up here, city schools and all that. And I am currently on the Board of Directors for the Baltimore City Medical Society, which has been around for over 200 years and has, I think we've got over 600 members, and we're very focused on the health of Baltimore City residents and the physicians who work in Baltimore, supporting those people. And so, we have, over the many years our organization has been around, we have had lots of interaction with the city, with the mayor, city council. Going back and looking at that history, it's pretty impressive what we've done, but we haven't really, you know, we do a lot of different things. We have some scholarships. We've given away like a half a million dollars over the past 20, 30 years or so for medical students that are in Baltimore City as just money to support them, to help them live and so forth. I'm here, well, I just finished a stint at Optum. I was the medical, Chief Medical Officer for the Behavioral Health ASO for Medicaid. I did that for three or four years, and that ended in May. Since I live in the city and you guys are talking about this, and I see, I've seen so many problems being medical director at Optum at the ASO, just, you know, and that's of course over the whole state, not just Baltimore City. But the common themes are, that I see, is access to care being a problem, quality of providers runs the gamut. You've got really, really super people doing a great job. You've got people that their heart's in the right place, but they need some help, and you've got other people who are out to scam and make some money off of folks. And telling the difference is a bit challenging, so more oversight, definitely, I agree with that. We need more data. You know, the ASO produces a lot of data, and since a lot of the folks in the city are on Medicaid, many of them are, I think that's a good place to start because you can get kind of comprehensive data. BHSP, I think, would be very helpful in doing that. And we, as Baltimore City Medical Society, are available to participate. I'm going to start, like, coming to these meetings and try to figure out what I can do and what I can get my folks to do, and if anything that you guys can think of that we can help with, we're here.
Thank you so much, Dr. Davies, and I will tell you, MedKai is, I'm working very closely with them, so I would love to--
Yeah, we're a MedKai component, yeah.
Okay, perfect. So, I would love to work with you all as well. We're beginning the, you know, beginning the conversation about the next steps related to provider availability and also provider accountability. So, I would love to engage, I would love to engage you in on that. We are in partnership with BHSP and other state-level partners because we're tying it very closely into the licensure and then also the curriculum at the medical schools as well. So, we're tying it all together, but I would love to connect with you after this because I think your voice, particularly from a provider perspective, is very needed in this conversation.
And if I can, just real quick, something you just mentioned, maybe think about saying that we've got, I think it's not next Saturday, but the next Saturday, we've got a function with Baltimore City, well, really local students--
Yes.
--to come, and we're going to talk about medical career pathways, and if you're interested in medicine and healthcare and nursing or whatever, we're there to help them kind of figure out how to navigate and so forth.
I love that.
So, very interested in the growth of healthcare people in the city.
I love that. Thank you so much.
Sure thing.
All right. Next, we're going to go to the presentation from BHSP, so I'll turn it over to your team to get started, and then committee members will be able to ask any questions from there. And so, BHSP, I'll turn it over to you all.
Great. Thank you. Good morning. And thank you, Councilwoman Porter, for having this hearing today, Councilman Cohen, or Council President Cohen, excuse me, for being here and all the other council members as well. My name is Krista Taylor. I'm the President and CEO of Behavioral Health System Baltimore, or also commonly referred to as BHSP. BHSP is the local behavioral health authority for Baltimore City. Do we have a clicker or should I? Okay, got it. Next slide. So, what is a local behavioral health authority? An LBHA is responsible for planning, managing, and monitoring publicly funded behavioral health services. Each of the 24 jurisdictions in Maryland have an LBHA. LBHAs get their scope and authority and their role from the Maryland Department of Health. And LBHAs are the local arm of the Maryland Department of Health's Behavioral Health Administration in providing oversight and management of the public behavioral health system. BHSP is, as the LBHA, is an independent nonprofit. The Health Commissioner serves as the ex-officio-chair of the BHSP Board. As the LBHA, we're expected to work closely with local government and other stakeholders. Oh. Yeah, okay, yeah, that one, sorry. Last time I had a clicker, I don't do this that often, so, yeah, there we go. So, BHSP is an independent nonprofit. The Health Commissioner serves as the ex-officio-chair of the BHSP Board. As the LBHA, we're expected to work closely with local government and other stakeholders and are expected to be accountable to the public. We're set up to be an honest, upfront broker. We're flexible and nimble in getting money out the door and in decision-making, and we bring expertise not only in behavioral health, but also in behavioral health systems. We use our knowledge of what services are available and how to structure system resources to meet the unique needs of the city's communities. All of this makes us an ideal on-the-ground expert for the city in planning for change that is needed to better serve people. Next slide. So, the history of BHSP goes all the way back to 1986. We were intentionally created as a nonprofit to manage a system of care. BHSP was the first local behavioral health authority in the state and served and continues to serve as a model for other jurisdictions. Next slide. There we go. The public behavioral health system is a state-driven system. BHSP, as a local behavioral health authority, is responsible for planning, managing, and monitoring resources, programs, and policies within the larger Medicaid fee-for-service system, as well as services directly funded through private and public grants. BHSP is not a direct service provider. We manage the publicly funded system of care in partnership with the Maryland Department of Health. Next slide. BHSP has five core functions: managing public funds, managing the system of care, building and sustaining partnerships, educating the public, and planning and advocating for change. Next slide. BHSP judiciously manages public funds on behalf of the Maryland Department of Health. This is done through adhering to solid and sound financial procurement and management practices, developing strong working relationships with funders, following their parameters, and passing those parameters on to contracted providers, and then financially and programmatically monitoring contracted service delivery to ensure contract deliverables are met. BHSP partners closely with Medicaid and the Behavioral Health Administration to manage the larger Medicaid system of care. What this means is that we collaborate to safeguard against unnecessary utilization of publicly funded services and to promote quality practices within the provider network. This is done through several tasks, including reviewing utilization data, processing agreements to cooperate, conducting inspections and site visits, investigating complaints and critical incidents, and offering training, support, and TA for providers. Next slide. People with behavioral health disorders have interaction with many systems, and BHSP's work cannot be done without strong working relationships with stakeholders and providers. BHSP partners closely with local system partners like the mayor's office, health department, police, and fire departments, and other various city agencies. We also work closely with other systems like DSS, DJS, schools, and the courts. And in addition to providers and system partners, BHSP engages with community members. It's through authentic relationships with community that we're able to stay accountable to what is needed in the system of care. Public education is another core area for BHSP. We promote wellness, prevention, and harm reduction practices, and help people understand what behavioral health is and how to access care. And we do this through a variety of means, including public education campaigns and media attention, as well as working closely with trusted partners and community who help carry messages forward. BHSP's last core function is planning and advocacy. We work with partners and community to identify gaps in the system of care and advocate for system-level change. We submit an annual report to the Behavioral Health Administration. We use data to inform system planning, service development, and advocacy efforts, and we establish community-informed policy priorities and work with government and elected leaders to pursue system goals. In our role as the LBHA, BHSP manages more than 64 million in grant funding with, from approximately 38 funding sources for services that Medicaid doesn't pay for. BHSP has fair and transparent procurement and contracting practices, and in FY '24, released 15 competitive procurements and issued 222 contracts to providers. Next slide. As mentioned earlier, the public behavioral health system is a state-driven system. The majority of BHSP's funding is from state sources, with the Behavioral Health Administration being the largest. And finally, the public behavioral health system that BHSP manages together with the Maryland Department of Health serves more than 80,000 people every year in Baltimore City, with annual expenditures greater than $900 million when accounting for both grant funding and Medicaid reimbursement. And now, I get to turn it over to Dan Rabbit, BHSP's Policy Director, to talk about state regulations.
Sure. Thanks, Krista. So, another really important component to the public behavioral health system is the Maryland Code of Regulation, commonly known as COMAR. And the, you know, COMAR is voluminous, but the part of COMAR that really is important for today's discussion is 1063. Next slide, please. COMAR 1063 covers community-based behavioral health services and programs, and, you know, that has been kind of updated and considered a number of times over the years. And what it does is it defines sort of requirements that apply to behavioral health providers and what they must do in order to obtain licenses to operate as a behavioral health provider in the state, and what the expectations are and consequences of not meeting those expectations are for community-based behavioral health providers. Next slide. There has been, you know, the reason this has been such a topic of conversation in this series of hearings is the state is looking to overhaul these regulations right now, and there's a number of reasons for that. One is there has been concern that there is not strong enough accountability and strong enough tools to kind of drive quality in the system. And so, that's one of the major, excuse me, one of the major goals of this revision. And another area is around recovery residences, which really have a pretty light touch in the current COMAR regimen, but receive like a whole new section in the proposed regulation. And, you know, these regulations, it's hundreds of pages, so they do a lot of different things, but this is just, you know, this slide tries to sort of characterize it generally. Next slide, please. You know, going back to summer of 2024 is really when this most recent round of revisions kicked off. The Department of Health published unofficial draft regulations online and hosted a series of meetings to go over, you know, what was included in those draft regulations, and they really kind of rewrote things top to bottom. BHSP participated in some stakeholder meetings. We had a number of good conversations, but then we didn't hear anything about it. And then, kind of surprisingly, in May of this year, official draft regulations were published that didn't really look a lot like the ones that were shared in the summer of 2024. It was also incomplete. They shared, they published chapters 1, 2, 6, and 9. That leaves out 3, 4, and 5, which are important components to the regulation. And so, I think BHSP and a lot of folks in Maryland were just a little taken aback by the incompleteness and just how different they looked from what we thought we were working on together in the summer of 2024. That led to the General Assembly stepping in and putting a pause or a delay, requiring a delay for those regulations so they couldn't move forward. And then ultimately, the Department of Health rescinded that draft from May of 2025 and has communicated that they intend to republish those chapters that were published in May, as well as the missing chapters later in 2025. We haven't heard like a firm date, but it is frustrating that we're kind of like, essentially there aren't any draft regulations right now. Like, we're confident that they're moving ahead, but exactly when that happens and what will they look like and how much back and forth will be required of when official draft regulations are published in the register, again, you know, is a bit of an open question. So, that's sort of where we're at today with COMAR regulations. Next slide, please. For both the draft that was shared in the summer of 2024 and the draft that was officially published in May of 2025, BHSP had similar comments and was, were frankly, a little frustrated that our comments from the summer of 2024 were not reflected in what was shared in 2025. Those comments really focused on empowering LBHAs to play a more significant role in driving quality and holding providers accountable and giving us just a few more tools to do so. LBHAs are not, there isn't a whole lot of content around LBHAs in COMAR currently, and so we proposed to create a new section that really explained the range of responsibilities that LBHAs play today, but just to like put it in writing so that we could engage in those responsibilities, you know, kind of with COMAR behind us. In addition, we recommended that the Agreement to Cooperate process, which is one of the main kind of roles that we do play, had more requirements behind it. Agreement to cooperate is a agreement that prospective providers must obtain in order to get licensed. And right now, if providers have all their paperwork, LBHAs essentially have to adopt or process the agreement, the agreement. We would like to add a few requirements on the front end that providers, you know, meet with us, share their plans for working with community, and just, you know, have a stronger relationship with us prior to us processing that agreement. Those were not included in the regs. You know, we shared these recommendations again, so we'll have to see what happens with subsequent releases, but if they're continued to not be included, we're prepared to consider legislation that would require such responsibilities and authorities to be granted to LBHAs. And, you know, we talked with MDH SUM about this relatively recently, and they said that they, they thought it should go in a different section of COMAR or some, but revising COMAR is a many-year-long process. That section of COMAR is not under consideration for revision right now. So, if it were to go in that other section, I don't know when it would happen. So, I think the time is now, and so we really hope that we can make some progress either through regulatory action or legislation. Next slide. The last thing just to mention is, sort of hanging over all of this, is that there is a pause in Medicaid enrollment for new providers right now of a couple of specific types. We've talked to, we've shared this with the committee before, but PRPs, SED, PHPs, and SED IOPs. Currently, new applicants can't enroll in Medicaid and can't get Medicaid reimbursement right now because of concerns around quality. The state went to the feds and requested a pause in enrolling these provider types over a year ago, July of 2024, and that pause has been extended to the end of this calendar year. I think kind of the premise is they don't want this pause to be lifted until the new regs are in place, so the tools to ensure quality are there. But, you know, then the calendar year is, you know, sooner than we all like think. So, that's just another thing, like, are they going to extend it again? Will the Trump administration allow them to extend it again? And how does that play into the timeline? So, that's kind of just an overview of what's going on with COMAR and the public behavioral health system. And now, I'm going to pass it over to Adrian to share a little more-- And now I'm going to pass it over to Adrian to share a little more about the accountability and complaint process.
Thanks, Dan. Good morning. Adrian Brydenstein, I'm the Vice President of Policy and Communications. Just quickly, want to add, related to COMAR, you do have a copy of the letter that we submitted to the department that outlines our comments in your packet. And I just wanted to add to what Dan said, the letter and our comments reflect years of feedback we've heard from this body and the community around wanting to have community input into where providers set up and how they come into our communities. So I do agree with Dan, the time is now to try to really get what we've been wanting for years into policy. And I look forward to the conversation after this on how we can work together on that. So next slide. I'm going to briefly talk about provider accountability. It's related to our role as the LBHA. It's also related to how COMAR fits in with things. So at BHSP, we have an accountability department, a small but mighty team, that is responsible for monitoring for quality and outcomes across the provider network. We do that through several, we have several tools available to do that. So we conduct regular audits of programs that we directly fund. We do that on an annual basis for anything that we fund every year. So that is something that is done all the time. We work directly with the Department of Health and BHA to investigate complaints and investigate critical incidents. I will be talking about complaints in a bit more detail. And then finally, as it relates to complaints, oftentimes complaints will result in some kind of corrective action plan or performance improvement plan for the provider. We are then responsible for working with the provider to implement those plans. Next slide. So for the focus of today's hearing, I'm going to talk about complaints, what they are, and how we approach investigating complaints. So complaints can come to BHSP through a variety of different ways, but what they are is a verbal or written expression of someone being dissatisfied with either services or how a healthcare, behavioral healthcare provider is operating. So this doesn't apply to every type of behavioral health program across the city. It's behavioral health providers within that public behavioral health system. So our role as the LBHA is to investigate any of the complaints that come to us. There are a few situations in which the LBHA would not be expected to investigate. One is if there's a conflict of interest that really happens for BHSP. The other is if claims or services have been denied by Medicaid, that's a whole different process. It's kind of very similar to how you might use your own health insurance if your claim is denied, you go through your health insurer. The final, or a couple other, as alleged, abuse or neglect, that is managed by the OIG. Medicaid fraud, that has its own special unit with the Office of the Attorney General. And then finally, there are sometimes complaints that come to us related to healthcare facilities that, yes, they might be offering behavioral health services, but they don't, they're not within our authority to investigate. So that might be hospitals or federally qualified health centers. Those are some of the more frequent ones. I will say, anytime we do get a complaint that falls into these categories that we are not expected to investigate, we will try to make sure it gets to the right entity. And we have lots of pathways and relationships in which we use to make sure it gets to the right place. Next slide. So there are a number of tools available to us that we use as we investigate complaints, and you see them listed there on the screen. We'll do a record review, that could be medical record review, depending again on the situation that comes in, if we need to look at staff records or client records. Policy and procedure review, making sure that policies and procedures align with what's in COMAR. Again, that's why COMAR revisions are so important, they beef up what's expected of providers. Site inspections, we do that for certain providers. We also do that as, again, as complaints come in, we will go out on site, sometimes unannounced, sometimes announced, to see what's happening. And the last one is certainly interviews with staff and the person who may be involved with the complaint, and I'll go into that in more detail. Next slide. So here are the steps that we take. Again, complaints can come to us through a variety of different ways, either written or verbal. We have an online complaints forum that people use. People come to us and staff at BHSP directly, and then we will submit complaints for them. But when we get a complaint, the first thing that we will do is contact the person who filed the complaint. We want to speak with them directly, try to get more detail and find out what happened, verify the information that we've received to make sure that we've got what we need to move forward with the next step in conducting our investigation. And so we'll do an analysis of the complaint, and then we'll use one of the, one or several, right, of those investigation tools that were on the previous slide to verify and substantiate the complaint. It's often more than one. We are often using more than one investigative tool to substantiate a complaint. We'll do all that work. We'll make a recommendation to the Behavioral Health Administration. This is an important step. We've talked about this a lot in this committee and others, that we will submit our recommendations to the department. Then they need to get back to us to tell us, yes, no, move forward with our recommendations. It often takes a day or two, business day or two, for them to get back to us. More often than not, they do tell us to move forward with the corrective action plan and recommendations that we have provided to them. And then so when we do have that approval, we move forward in working with the provider. And that may be offering guidance or education or providing some more hands-on technical assistance. But we will work with them to address the findings in the complaint and move forward with addressing the corrective action plan. And that can happen over a series of weeks or can also happen over a series of months. Again, all that we do in partnership with the Behavioral Health Administration, but we do try to be very hands-on with the provider in addressing the findings in the complaint. Next slide. So for an overview, this most recent fiscal year, we investigated 86 complaints. What you see on this screen are the top sources of our complaints. So where they come from? Almost half of them come from Medicaid, but a good 20% of them come from consumers. So those are people who are getting services at the programs that are in the city. And then the last, the final sources, from the Behavioral Health Administration themselves. Next slide. So just to end on how people can submit complaints to us, again, they can be verbal or written, but we do have an online complaint forum. You can access it through our website. You can also access it through that QR code. Our community engagement team is out there distributing that QR code as often as they can. We want complaints. Again, it doesn't matter if it, to us, what it is, or if it doesn't apply to us in that we don't have the authority, we will get it to the right place, but it helps us gather information, data on how a provider is doing, and it gives us an opportunity to engage with that provider, again, even if it's not something that we have direct authority over. So you file your complaint with us, there's a variety of different ways. You can also call us or email us directly. And then finally, the last thing I want to say is our complaints team will follow up with the person who made the complaint to let them know the outcome. We are limited as to what, you know, detail we can share, especially if it's related to health information for a consumer, but we always follow up with the people to let them know the outcome of the investigation. And that's it. We're happy to take any questions.
Wonderful. Thank you so, so much for providing that presentation. And colleagues, just to connect the dots with my vision for these legislative oversight hearings, when we're talking about the agreement to cooperate, residential care treatment facilities and neighborhoods, this is the regulation that really is one that we should be focusing on at the state level. And so I know that we've been doing some work, I've been doing some work for a few years now with BHSP related to COMAR 1063. As we approach the next General Assembly session this January, I'm hopeful that we as a committee will be able to show that advocacy along with BHSP in Annapolis for our state legislators. So I'm going to start off the first round of questions. Colleagues, we'll get two questions each. Yeah, we'll get two questions each, and then we'll go back around for a lot of questioning. So Adrian, I want to, I want to go back to the agreement to cooperate. One of the major issues that I have with that is that it does not have a codified community component. So what, one of my main, you know, one of my concerns, even with the revisions to COMAR 1063, is that a community will say that they do not want a provider, or there's an oversaturation of said provider in a respective area, and the agreement to cooperate is still, is still passed, you know, so it's still authorized. How are you all getting around that? How are you all ensuring that even with the oversaturation of these types of clinics, you all are able to add to the agreement to cooperate to ensure that we're not continuing the oversaturation against community will?
Yeah, that's a great question. And just for some quick context, for those who may not be familiar of where the agreement to cooperate fits in within the process, it is one of the documents that providers need to obtain before they go to the state to apply for full licensure. It is the document they must get from the local behavioral health authority. So the document itself, agreement to cooperate, outlines the services that a provider is going to offer, and then it has some very general language around how the provider is expected to partner with the local behavioral health authority. So it says like, you must let us investigate complaints and critical incidents, for example. It's very general. It doesn't have, in my opinion, much teeth. So that is one of the things we would like to see changed through COMAR, is to give it more teeth, and we do believe that there should be a community component in that. One of the things I'll say is we, if a provider right now, if they meet all of the requirements that are expected of them, which are outlined in COMAR, which says they need to be accredited by a national accrediting body, they need to have all their local, you know, permits available, such as fire and use and occupancy, they need to have, so if they have those things, we must issue the agreement to cooperate. We are not allowed to withhold it. We can put other things in place, though, locally, and we've been doing that. So we have a great provider relations team that goes out and does site visits in advance with providers, meets with them, lays out the expectation, our expectations that they participate in regular provider meetings with us, that they engage with us regularly so we can kind of know what's going on. And then we also ask them how they've been working to engage with the community, and if they don't know, we get them in touch with, either sometimes it's your offices, or sometimes we know directly who the community groups are there. We have limited authority to follow up and say, did you do this or not? We do, we do follow up to see, did you do it or not? If they don't do it, though, we can't do anything other than encourage, encourage, encourage. So I don't know if that's answering your question.
And that, that answers my question in the way that I, in the way that I thought I was going to answer, so it's a very ambiguous answer. It's a, it's a kind of a black hole. And what I'm fearful of is that with these revisions, there's still going to be that black hole there. The other area that I believe that we should be targeting is the community needs assessment that goes along with the licensure. One of the major issues that we're dealing with is that, and this is where I believe the oversaturation occurs, you have one, you have one entity and then another entity like thousand feet away, you can throw a rock and you can say that there is an issue. So I believe that we need to have some sort of scope within that community needs assessment that limits it by distance, but also types of clinic within the respective distance. Because when we look at corridors and the C1, C2, like Hartford Road, Washington Boulevard, we have those same clinics, one by one after another. And so I'm hopeful, if you are, you know, talking with BHA, adding that distance component to the community needs assessment will be very helpful, and that will limit the saturation that we're seeing in community as well. Secondly, I wanted to talk through the corrective action plan. So I've been on both sides, just in my professional experience with those corrective action plans from BHSP. What happened, and just for my colleagues' knowledge, what happens when those corrective action plans are not followed?
Anytime we decide that corrective action is needed, that's recommended to the Behavioral Health Administration. The Behavioral Health Administration then gives us to go ahead to say, take the correction, the corrective items to the provider, help them come up with a provider and a performance improvement plan or corrective action plan, and work with them to help implement that plan. If we see that they are not following it, it then goes back to the Behavioral Health Administration. Again, we have limited authority in being able to force a provider to do something. So we would then go back to the Behavioral Health Administration, tell them what we're seeing, telling them of our concerns, telling them of things that might need to change on the plan, or any other steps that might be needed.
And the reason why I asked that question is because when, colleagues, when you're in community and folks are like, can't you just shut this place down? You can't do that. And so there is a procedural step leading to BHA with these corrective action plans. And oftentimes, they're not just like one to two to three, they're pretty long-winded, those corrective action plans, and even changing those corrective action plans. And so when we are thinking through legislation and we're thinking through legislative options that we could execute within our committee, being able to connect those dots and seeing how we can use enforcement levers, maybe through housing, maybe through public safety and government operations, where we're able to kind of integrate that system before it gets to BHA. All right. Mr. President, did you have any questions?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Krista and team, for the presentation. Sort of on that same thought, I think what a lot of council members experience is a lot of complaints from residents in particular corridors where there is a sense of oversaturation or just a sense that a facility is not well-run and is not serving a patient population effectively. And there's all sorts of activity happening outside or in the general area that makes folks uncomfortable, and I think ultimately does a lot, unfortunately, to reinforce stigma and add to a sentiment of people not wanting facilities in their neighborhood. I am curious, as you all, as we go back to Annapolis this year, thinking about some of the facilities that have either been in the newspaper in the last year or so, or that are just completely commonly-known bad actors. I am somewhat building on the chair's question around corrective action plan. How can we build in a greater degree of accountability? How can we make sure that there is not the same persistent complaints coming again and again and again, that ultimately get to council members, get to delegates, get to senators? I think as the folks who are somewhat closest to the ground in local government, it often, we hear about it. And so curious from the BHSP perspective, as the BHA, as we think about COMAR, what, you know, I asked this about Chris's response, like, what does it look like to be best-in-class at being able to support facilities that need support and be able to hold accountable those that need accountability?
I'll take a quick stab, but probably turn it over to Adrian. I think it is what we're talking about. It is really putting teeth in the regs. The regs are really watered down right now and don't really give not only the local behavioral health authority, but the Behavioral Health Administration a lot of authority to take action or quick action as well. So really, it is around the regs and the other tools, like the agreements to cooperate, requiring things like looking at the saturation in neighborhoods, the locals being able to have the authority to say, no, this isn't needed in this community, and here's why. So it is going to take, I think, legislative action and regulation change. Adrian, things to add?
Yeah, one thing I'll add, yes, I agree with that. I think there needs to be more teeth in there. One thing that did get through earlier this year, revision to COMAR, is there is a section on civil monetary penalties for providers. So it basically says there's a financial consequence if you do something wrong. Now, this can be levied only by the Behavioral Health Administration, so not by us, but I know it's been used a few times since it went into effect. So that's one tool. But related to that, I mean, financially, that's where you can often get the attention. So we do have some tools available to us that I think we need to put some more clear parameters around when they can be used, such as you can limit a provider or tell them to stop taking new Medicaid enrollees, so you can't take on any new patients. Medicaid is their main source of revenue. That could be a potential consequence. So looking at things like that and then more clearly spelling So looking at things like that, and then more clearly spelling out parameters, either in Comar or sub-guidance for when these things can be utilized, I think would be, would be very helpful. I know it's things that have come up in conversations with stakeholders, even suggested by provider groups themselves, but again, kind of where Dan was earlier, we are waiting for these new revisions to come out and see what they look like. But there are tools that we can be using.
I appreciate that. I'm going to yield, but appreciate both the acknowledgement of a need for sharper legislation to provide more tools, but also, to your point, Adrian, that there are things within, that exist currently, that we should be utilizing to support. Just making sure we are doing right by the people that we serve in neighborhoods, particularly those that have been most harmed by the want on drugs, those that see the most overdoses. I appreciate it. Thank you, BHSP team, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Councilman Conway?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and appreciate you continuing to focus on this issue. I know it's probably one of the issues we get stuck most as a council member when we get complaints from the community, and also appreciate you guys for helping us navigate what we can and can't do. The presentation actually was really helpful for me. I think it highlighted a couple of things that you do have the ability to work on, and what, what access we have to leverage the law today. I was curious if you could, is, to the best of your understanding, tell me what you believe we can use to, to judge quality of treatment centers today? One of the, the doctor, I'm sorry, I can't remember his name, Dr. Davies testified earlier that, you know, there's a difference between these good and bad providers that we see across the city, and I know that very personally from going to visit some, and some in my own district. One of the difficulties that I don't yet have a strong understanding of is how to demonstrably turn, tell the difference between the two. And so I'm curious for you, do you have a sense for how you might judge the quality of care from some of these providers? Do we have data today, or at least some anecdotal evidence that might suggest these folks are doing better than these folks in serving patients?
I can start, and if you want to climb in. So that's a great question. It is something that we've been looking at more deeply. Statewide and at the state level, there are no measures for quality for the system of care. And so we've been trying to look at this more closely at the local level, while the state works on what they're working on at the state level. But some of the things that we believe are indicators of good quality, and I'll start with the community one, because I know that's important to this committee, is, is, does the program, does the program engage with the community? Do they have a community engagement plan? Do they have staff that are dedicated to proactively working with the community? So we think that is an indication of a well-run program, and an indication potentially of quality. Other things that, you know, again, this is not set in stone, things that we're looking at is how are they integrating services, mental health and substance use in particular? They're overlapping. The system grew up with them being separate, but now we really need to look at them holistically. So are programs doing that, or are they only just treating them separately? Harm reduction practices, we think should be used system-wide, and in fact, it is something that we have added into, Krista, correct me if I'm wrong, contract deliverables for certain or all providers this year, to help try to spread that practice across the system more broadly. Some, I feel like I'm forgetting some things, but so those are some examples of things that we think, and we do have anecdotal information, but there's not like, system-wide data. Anything you want to add?
I would just add one other thing. I think you covered it all. I would just add that another good, another indicator of a good quality, high-quality provider is that even in the absence of the state collecting data, they are looking at data, and they are using that data regularly to inform their practice, not just about like counting widgets, but also about outcomes. There was a prior hearing when Powell Recovery was here and talked about their data and how they use their data. So, you know, in the absence of the state mandating it, there are providers out there that are doing that, that are good actors.
Yeah, Powell, they gave an awesome presentation with tons of data, and that was super, I feel like, oh, go ahead.
I could add one more thing. I'm sorry, Councilman, I don't mean to interrupt, but again, along the lines of the public testimony, I think developing stronger partnerships with the Medicaid Administrative Services Organization, they're collecting tons of data, and I think, and they've just contracted with a new entity the start of the year, so they're still kind of getting things situated, but you can look and see what providers are doing the bare minimum to maximize revenue. You can kind of see that from, depending, you know, from the data. So developing stronger partnerships there, and kind of, because they're also doing their own audits, and that communication isn't always as, as routine as it could be, so it's another direction.
I can just add to that, in support of what we're talking about, the ASO data is the state's data. So it is the Behavioral Health Administration and Maryland Department of Health's data. The ASO operates on a contract with MDH. So a lot of the data that the state puts out is ASO data.
Yeah, I asked that question because I think what, and we talked about this in one of these hearings, I can't remember the second, third, or we have, we've had a couple now, but this opportunity to help people who are trying to manage their addiction, and trying to figure out the good from the bad, how do they know the difference? I mean, it's near impossible to tell when you Google which ones have better outcomes until you show up, and even then, it's still hard to tell. So I'm, I think it'd be helpful if, if there are data sets, either state data or data that you guys collect, that can be helpful towards uplifting that information and empowering people who are having to make difficult decisions. Do they want to go to the one that's, you know, easiest to get to, or the one that has the best outcomes? And they're going to have to make a judgment call there. And, you know, I think data is going to be really important. And some of that data, I suspect, isn't collected today, although we may know it, you know, whether or not they're offering harm reduction and things like that. We may know it, but we don't collect it in paperwork, anywhere. So. My second question is, I noted in the presentation that you guys don't deal with Medicaid fraud. That's one of the things you guys do not do. I'm curious how you handle those complaints and sort of what comes of them.
Yeah, if we get a complaint that's around alleged or suspected Medicaid fraud, we have to refer it to the OIG, and then it ultimately goes to the Medicaid unit at the Attorney General's Office.
Do we have the ability in those instances to, to freeze, or do we have any ability to maybe slow things down or stop things until those things are figured out?
We don't, as the local behavioral health authority, but the state does. So the answer is yes, the state does, but not us.
So like, through the partnership with the state?
Yeah.
Maybe, okay, got it. Those are my two questions for now. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Councilman. I'll turn it over to Councilman Parker. All right, perfect. Councilman Torrance?
So my question, because my colleagues have been very thorough, is going to go more towards zoning, because what I'm seeing very clearly, especially since we have a housing package bills, especially parking minimums, I have a number of locations who are purposely choosing locations that are in C1s, and registering themselves as clinics, so that they don't have to meet parking minimums. And I just want to know, are we working with them to actually identify locations, and why are we, and how are we helping them through that process? Because I will tell you that since inheriting the other half of Pennsylvania Avenue, there's been three new, new clinics open up, and one of the operators owns two of them, and said that honestly, it was because of the profitability of being in the area, next to Pennsylvania Lawrence, where I had a multiple incident set.
Yeah, so the question I heard in there is, are we working with providers to set up in their location? And the short answer is no. They have done that work before they come to us. So they're, when they come to us, it's usually for the agreement to cooperate when they're setting up, and they already have their use and occupancy permit and their fire permit. But to your point around zoning, I am, I will say, I'm not a zoning expert. I don't know what C1 meant in that comment, so I'm just going to be really clear. I think there's opportunity there. I don't know what it is, but I think there's opportunity. And we would be, we would welcome a conversation with the right people to figure out what the, is that could happen there.
And that's, I think that's the hard part, too, because I've had people go to an area which is a commercial one, which, which this is already a conditional use by a matter of right, and will say that they're going there, and will give them a use and occupancy, and then they will change their certification to then be able to dispense medication afterwards. And we're seeing that, and this is why I would say we need to have that broader conversation, because I have the Black Arts and Entertainment District on Pennsylvania Avenue, and people are purposely choosing to move into that district because they don't have to meet parking minimums, whereas I had a behavioral health person who wanted to move on Doe Field, and near Ashburton, and the way that they were unable to enter that location is because they needed parking locations, parking spots for their patients, five of them. They couldn't get it. They even lied to the BMZA and said that they had approval from Aldi for the parking. And I think that we need to have a broader conversation with getting ahead of time with the, the cooperation agreement. Let's talk about location, let's talk about how we approach it, and be very explicit so that community doesn't feel like they're lied to, in a way. I'll give you a broader example. In the 32 and 3100 block of West North Avenue, I had a provider come in and said they wanted to provide mental health services for youth, but we just gave KIP a grant for mental health services for youth, but they're using the needs assessment to say it's justifiable, but what they really wanted to say is that they wanted to openly open up a location next to my largest open-air drug market for marijuana, to then have direct access to funnel people into their PRP program. And they were, and that came out after having conversations with community members. So all these things are mapping together, and I just want to make sure that we can get ahead of time in the forefront end to have those conversations, what people truly want to do, so that we can know how we can gear with their actual financial interests and what the community's interests are together, so we can pair them together. I say that because it's hard. Like, I am a person who has family members who has mental health issues, has substance use, all these things go together. I just want to make sure that when we start thinking about the regulation for Comar, let's talk about getting ahead of it, and having those conversations, and pairing them with the right zoning, with the right community conversations, but also have it in a way where it's transparent.
Yes, we support of that.
I would like to eat some more teeth. I'll put it that way.
Yeah, we're so interested in that conversation. We're no zoning experts, but to the extent that we can, can add some value to that conversation, we're happy to be a part of it.
And Councilmen, stay tuned for Monday, because I think you will be very happy with the legislation that I'll be introducing on Monday.
Well, praise the Lord.
Praise the Lord. So you are in, no, but to your point, to your point, you're actually in the right vein. And I think that, you know, not only like commercial corridors, we also need to be considering our R8 districts, our residential districts as well. We don't want to be so restrictive that we're like, you can't come here, because there is a need for quality clinics throughout the city. But I think that, to your point, they are focusing in respective areas because of cheap rent, the profitability, and also making sure that they don't have to do those parking minimums. So I believe we are spot on with that as well.
Yeah, and I agree with you, because I literally had the person say that he could have had a lease in another area of the city, and the reason why he didn't go with the lease was because it was a triple net, which means they would be responsible for the property taxes, the upgrades, and everything to the building, whereas he was paying $1,200 for the location on West North Avenue. And for me, having black and brown areas, it is cheaper to move and get a larger margin in my area than it is to move to the YL, where I've had businesses close because they're getting $8,000 rent plus triple net, or looking at where transit is. I had a business trying to move down the street from Mondomin and lied about what they actually want to provide. We had to stop them from trying to put a daycare in the same center as behavioral health, as well as methadone, in the same location. They thought they could do it, and they weren't even paying attention to Comar.
Yeah.
And allegedly, this person was sent to the medical board for, for doctors, because they dispensed medication irregularly, wrong. And we don't have any recourse, because this person's already been investigated by medical boards, and some things have been sustained versus not been sustained, but they're still able to operate not only a behavioral health clinic, but also a methadone clinic in West Baltimore, in a neighborhood that said they wanted local retail. So I just want to make sure that we, I lift that up, and also say this for my colleagues, we have a moral choice in the next couple of weeks with these housing bills and these zoning bills, to say that we want to grow Baltimore, and I just want to say this frankly, and again, on the record always, we can't grow Baltimore until Black Baltimore is thriving, and when people are predatoryly taking advantage of Black Baltimore, we're not going to get there. And if we don't think about the controls, we're going to end up with locations and places where black people and middle-class black people are seeing it, and they're going to leave. We can have a tax base, we can grow this city, but we can do it in a way that makes sense for every resident, but also welcomes people at the same time. And I'll yield back to the chair.
Thank you so much, Councilman. Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Apologies for being late today as well, and thanks for this conversation. I have two things. One is, after our last conversation about this subject, remember, we talked about the bill that the council passed last term, that was my bill, to make sure that these residential facilities were going to have to follow the building code, and then also had a step up. And I have yet to get an answer from the mayor's office or DHCD as to where we are on implementing that, and how many have been classified. So I know the mayor's office isn't here, but they should be, and I just wanted to put on the rec, okay, I just wanted to put on the record that I still have not heard back. I will try to also do that, because I want to make sure that we are implementing that, and maybe that's something, Madam Chair, you and I can talk about in terms of a future oversight, because that bill really would, does help, and was meant to help, make sure that the people who are living in those situations are in better situations, but because they would be in better situations, it wasn't necessarily going to be, you know, something that was disturbing to the neighborhood. But also, we couldn't have the distance at the time, and that's something to think about. So, one. Two is, related to the regulations, and just kind of emphasizing the point of Madam Chair and the President, where can we be helpful in pushing to make sure that this goes well, right? I mean, the regulations are all done in a back room, and then we can, and then we can comment on it later, but like, I would like to know, and maybe you don't need to say in this forum, but at least tell us at some point, whose phone I need to blow up to say, hey, we would really like to be able to be at the table when you're having these conversations? As electeds, we get entry into these things more than, you know, others, and we want to be, and you've heard it from all of us today, to be a part of the conversation relative to that, because I'm hearing you say, it's the regulations, it's the regulations. And I know that there is a committee, that my senator and my colleague senator is one of the chairs, on sort of overlooking, or, you know, having oversight over regulate, is that who, like, I need to know who to call, so that we can be involved in this conversation?
Thank you for that, and I'll get you who you need to call, for sure. I can follow up with you on that. So I, in response, I just want to give some information, because I think it's, could be a multi-pronged strategy in addition to calling people. So, related to Comar, BHSP met with the Behavioral Health Administration in August, specifically about our comments. We wanted to know what they thought of them, and were they going to take them? The short answer is, they said they thought they were good comments, but they didn't fit in 1063. They thought they fit in a different area of Comar, 1021, which also applies to some behavioral health, some parts of the behavioral health system. We've done our analysis, we disagree. So we are going back to the department and requesting again that our comments around creating a section that defines the local behavioral health authority, gives us more authority in that section, be included in Comar 1063. Honestly, I think it could fit in both parts of Comar. I don't know why the department would limit it to one. So, it would be great to partner with the council and you all, is bringing that same message to the Department of Health. message to the Department of Health, the Behavioral Health Administration. I think a letter going on record would be fantastic. We will be happy to write it for you or give you language, like, we'll partner in whatever way it makes sense. And then certainly phone calls, and we can help support that as well.
Yeah, and just the formal process, you know, so when it gets published, a a letter endorsed by the city council laying out recommendations, I think that would go a long way and, you know, can kind of be the foundation for further conversations.
Are we expecting them to come out again anytime soon?
I would imagine, they've said before then in the year.
Late 2025.
Yeah.
Yeah, I kind of want to be proactive, if you don't mind, Madam Chair.
No, so we can, we can definitely write a letter on behalf of the committee. I'm totally in favor of that. What I would also say is, we are all in Annapolis, we, you know, we're all very active in Annapolis. There are so many priorities. I want us to make sure that we have health and public health as a priority in Annapolis as well. Last year, I did a advocacy day with BHSB. Over 60 advocates came out. And so it's a very rewarding experience, but we need more local legislators in the room so that we're offering those firsthand accounts of what's happening and what's currently existing within our municipalities.
Well, and Madam Chair, if we can coordinate on that, because as you know, I'm there a lot, I want to have the same language so that if I'm asked about it or if I'm in a space where it's like, I got to talk, you know, that I can be helpful. So I'll work with you on that. I have like several things I'm going to be down there for this year, as you know, so.
We'll see each other again.
Yes. So, yeah, but again, you just need to consider us as partners in this work. And so I appreciate that you'll, you know, work with us on that. I do want to try to get a letter out or something prior to those regulations coming out. I think, again, as electeds, we have, we need to assert our, you know, people elected us and we need you to hear us type of situation, which I think Madam Chair is emphasizing here as well. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman. Colleagues, are there any other questions? And we were joined also by Councilman Blanchard. Thank you. Did you have any other questions, colleagues? Councilman Parker?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you everyone for being with us today. Get to the right email here. I know we spoke a little bit about the about the timeline around the moratorium on signing up for Medicaid reimbursement because of the work that needs to be done to correct the system. I was approached by a provider in our district, in the first district, relative to the timing of their application and their denial by BHA. They'd submitted applications in March of '24. They they got their letter, received their letter of approval in September of '24, and the letter backdated their approval to the end of July in 2024. And then they they found themselves then unable to, called up in the moratorium somehow. Without getting specifics of that, and again, the letter wasn't written directly to me, it was cluing me into it, it was written to BHA. Can you speak generally to folks who may have been opening up in that timeframe and at what stage in their approval process they would have gotten caught or not caught in this moratorium? Or if you're able to speak to, I mean, I know there's an extension through another, remind us when the current moratorium is extended to?
Yes, so the moratorium was from July 1, 2024, through the end of the year, 2025, and it could be extended beyond December 31, 2025. I'm not sure. My understanding is if you applied prior to July 1, that you'd be like kind of grandfathered in. So if if they did apply in March 2024, I wouldn't think they should be subject to it. And but and BHA is the right entity to.
Great, no, I appreciate that. And I was surprised I hadn't heard about it until it was like literally three weeks ago, and I was like, wow, clearly they've been dealing with this for a long time and uncompensated care and all the rest. I understand in looking at the recommendations, the letter you put together, the recommendations that you all have for the state as it looks at these regulations, just remind me, I know we were talking about it before, just remind me, at the current moment, do any of the local LBHAs, are any of the local LBHAs involved? Do any of them have independent or 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 kind of coincidental licensing processes outside of BHAs?
No.
There's no. And it doesn't, it doesn't seem as though there's really very much involvement right now. I mean, that's, I'm characterizing this correctly, there's very little involvement right now by LBHAs in BHA's process on the front end. On the back end, I understand there's a complaint process, things like that.
Yeah, that's fair. I mean, we tried to engage with providers and like get to know them and let them know about who we are and the support that we can provide, but that's sort of kind of besides the point of the BHA licensing process.
At what point is BHSB informed about applications and their, and, you know, pending, you know, pending applications or new providers coming on the scene? What's that communication process look like?
Yeah, when they apply for an agreement to cooperate, right?
Yeah, it's when they need the agreement to cooperate. At that point, they already have a location, they, you know, they have their national accreditation, and then they're coming to us more as a, give us our letter pass-through type of situation like we, like we talked about, that doesn't really have a lot of teeth right now. That's usually the first time that we hear of a provider. After they go through the application process with BHA and are approved, we do get notified that they have been licensed. I know that wasn't part of your question, but that's the extent of the communications that we try, like we've been saying, to really seize that informal authority to try to engage with providers as much as we can.
No, I appreciate it, and I really appreciate the comments you already provided and the follow-up comments, and look forward to our engagement alongside you in that. I also am very intrigued and will read with interest whatever comes from Madam Chair here this next week. I know that there's, my understanding is there's some limitations to what local jurisdictions can do and for very legitimate reasons around around this area, but also that there are some opportunities that we haven't fully explored, but the other jurisdictions have. And I hope that that's where we're headed with the conversation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, Councilman Blanchard, did you have any questions, sir?
No, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other items to share? All right, just from a closing perspective, thank you all so much for joining today. BHSB, this is a continuation of the conversations that we've been having over the past few months. For the public's knowledge, if you want to engage in the conversation, please email my office. I'm always willing to have the conversation about public health and healthcare in general, because I think that this is an opportunity where we can't wait any longer for these for these quality care measures to infiltrate our city. And so we have to have a very due diligence approach, but we also have to move with expediency in relaying this matter to our constituents. All right, thank you all so much.